Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to remind everyone to please be sure that all cellphones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Alva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Back is absent today. Councilman Wilson?
Here.
And Councilman Cannon and Reed are both absent today. We do have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to convene today. Father God, we thank you for those in attendance. Father, we ask that you continue to touch and shine and smile on this great city, Lord God. Touch the leaders of this city, Father, that we will engage with both purity of heart and wisdom in our decision-making, Father God. Continue to touch us and grow us as a community, grow us together, and grow us closer, Father God. And through it all, we give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting that was held on February the 4th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 31st through February the 6th and 7th through 13th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts for both weeks.
Proclamation. Unfinished business. An ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 1230 West Megan Boulevard. Joseph Alavis has offered $500 for the property. And this ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have items B and C. No council action will be necessary regarding these resolutions. Order an abatement of nuisance on property at 1002 Christopher Street in District 5 or on property at 3515 West Megan Boulevard in District 6. The nuisance have already been abated by the owners.
Madam President, point of privilege. I just want to say thank you to Alba Luz Guevara Aguilar and Elsie Naomi Baroso. This is a home that we tabled any action on 30 days ago, and the property owners actually abated the nuisance on their own. They took care of the problem. Everything's fine, so we're dismissing this. There's no need for us to take action. So thank you to those two residents of District 5 for taking care of that property.
Okay. We did vote on it. Did we vote?
We don't have to.
We don't have to. Okay. Our next item is a resolution appointing members to the Library Board, and this reappoints Ally Kazi for a term ending February the 16th, 2024. And the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is declaring a one-year moratorium on certain new business license in order to prevent overdevelopment of payday loans, car title loans, and check cashing businesses within the city, and to provide for balance and promote the prosperity and welfare of the citizens. This enacts a one-year moratorium on the issuance of new license of this classification. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is accepting a conveyance of property at 3113 Sudi Avenue. The owner is unable to keep up the property and wish to convey it to the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
I didn't catch. You made the second. Okay. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
For first reading, the ordinance authorizing flood damage prevention ordinance is being removed from the agenda. A public hearing will be advised for a later date. Our next ordinance is authorizing conveyance of property located at 1523 Fourth Avenue. Ophelia Morello has offered to pay $2,000 for the property. And this ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President. I do have one item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a resolution approving agreement with an outside engineering firm to provide master planning, landscape design, irrigation design, and all required architectural plans for the construction of the sports park at Gaston State. I'd ask for consideration today, or consent to consider today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President. I have a document from the Engineering Department. This is an ordinance conveying property located at Springfield Avenue to Donnell and Doris Horton for $1.
Second.
Ask for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt. Second.
Are they in discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any department reports, I believe Parks and Recreation had some upcoming events they wanted to report.
My name is Jen Wapleton. For those who do not know me, I am the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Gaston.
Thank you, Alva. And I just wanted to give an update of what Parks and Recreation has been doing lately. In athletics, we just finished up our basketball, our youth basketball season. We had 95 basketball teams from ages ranging 6 and under to 12 and under, and boys and girls. 16 of our teams are going to be going to ARPA District for February 28th and 29th. 8U will be held in Gaston. 10U will be held at Piedmont. 12U will be held in Jacksonville. The state ARPA tournament will be in Trusville March 13th through 15th. I just got a report that our 8U girls, 9U girls, 9U boys, and 11U boys will be going straight to state. There was not enough teams to participate in district. We will also be hosting a league tournament for all of our teams that participate in our regular season on March 6th and 7th. This is the first time we've been able to offer this tournament. This is open to any team that participates in our league throughout the season if they so choose to do so. Baseball registration is open until March 1st, and then you can go to gaston reddess.com to register your child from 12 and under. Player evaluations will be February 23rd, March 1st at Titan Baseball Field starting at 12:30 PM, and the player draft will be March 1st for the coaches. Softball registration has closed, but they are taking some late registration, and people can visit Couso Valley Girls Softball's webpage for that information. We'll be hosting an adult flag football tournament Sunday, March 22nd at Weeks Field. At Couso Landon, we have upcoming March 7th, we have Dalvo and Bass Federation, and on March 21st, we have the ASA/FA High School Tournament. Right now, we also have open registration for the Couso Landon Super Bass Tournament, which is held on April 4th at Couso Landon. Please visit Couso Landon's Facebook page for more information on that. Mistletoe Market is going to be March 13th through 15th at the Downtown Civic Center, and our weekly Friday night 60 and older dance will be at the Pittman that week. At Naklel Falls this year, we're going to open it early on February 21st, the park. We also have that weekend, we have the NICAR, Arnaca High School Mountain Bike Time Trial Event on Saturday and Sunday. We're expecting over 600 student athletes to be qualifying on the Black Creek Trails. We're also taking up at Naklel Falls, application for handmade craft vendors and artists for the Art on a Rock Event held on May 2nd through 3rd in the park. Please have all applications in by the end of this month, and you can email those applications at cheryl@gasstong.com. Registration for Smoke on the Falls is open also for backyard and professional teams. This registration closes on March 30th, and the Smoke on the Falls event is April 11th, and gates open at 10:00 AM, and it's $5 for people to enter ages 4 and older. We also have registration open for the Black Creek Archery Tournament held up at Naklel Falls on April 11th, and you can go to gaston reddess.com for these events. Thank y'all.
Will all of these also be offered on Channel 99? The events that you just announced?
We'll be putting together a slideshow to hand in for that to be put up on the channel.
Okay.
What was the date on baseball again?
Baseball registration is open right now, and it ends March 1st. We will be having player evaluations this Sunday, and on March 1st, so February 23rd and March 1st will be player evaluations, and then we'll be doing the player draft with the coaches that evening of March 1st. So practice should start the week of March 2nd.
Age ranges?
Age range from 5 to 12. So it'll be a 5 and 6, which is T-ball. 7 and 8, coach pitch. 9, 10 is player pitch. Minor League, and 11, 12 is Major League.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two citizen requests. One is, okay, I'm sorry.
If I may say something, and this is loosely related, but I wanted to give Parks and Rec Many of you may be aware that we started back in 2018, I think it was, doing the Movies in the Park events. We started in North Gaston, did a big Movies in the Park event then. Here, this past year, we did another event here at Morana Park.
Multiple ones across the city, and then we did have some at Morana, and we'll be starting those up in the spring.
Yeah, so those are all events that have been put on by Parks and Rec. But something interesting, I noticed an article that came across a couple weeks ago, I guess, a high school in Berkeley, Emerson Elementary, I'm sorry, Emerson Elementary School in Berkeley, California got fined or got assessed a licensing fee for illegal screening of those movies. And so where my mind went initially is, okay, I need to make sure that we're okay. And I quickly remembered that Jen lectured us early on in that process about paying that fee ahead of time so that we don't get fined or get a licensing fee assessed for illegally screening those movies. So again, you know, just a simple point to note is that it just speaks to some of the due diligence that goes into planning these events. You can assume that you're okay to just rent a CD and screen the movie in a public venue, but at the end of the day, there are some legal responsibilities that are necessary and things that we have to account for. So I want to publicly commend her for having the foresight because she quickly jumped on that and told us, hey, we need to go ahead and play this screening fee so that we don't get fined later. So again, I just, I thought it'd be worth bringing that up and just making people aware that, you know, she was on top of that. So we are not riding dirty, so to speak, whenever we screen movies in the parks. So thank you. Thank you, Parks and Rec. Thank you, Jen.
At this time, we'll hear from Chris William, Quality of Life, talk about All of Us Research Program.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have packets here for the entire council as well as anyone else who would so desire. The All of Us Program is a national initiative instituted by the National Institutes of Health. This is a nationwide initiative. However, Quality of Life along with UAB and Alabama Regional Medical Services were awarded the opportunity to present this program in the state of Alabama. Quality of Life's reach is primarily to the rural areas. As we know, UAB is concentrated in Birmingham, and they're not able to reach into some of the neighborhoods and communities that we are at a Quality of Life. To give you an overview of what the program consists of, there is a great need for greater representation from people outside of the box, if you will, when it comes to the creation of medicine. Most of the medicine that we currently take is pretty much predicated upon people who contributed research in mostly metropolitan areas, New York City, Los Angeles, California, and the like. However, New York City does not have the diet that we have in Alabama, nor do they have the weather conditions, nor the familial breakdown that we have. So we needed, this initiative brings forth a program and an opportunity for those of us who eat differently, live in different environments, and deal with even certain different medical conditions to be represented in research. And the overall objective is to create what they call precision medicine. What is precision medicine? All of us, or many of us, either wear glasses or know someone who wears glasses, wears contacts. I can be farsighted as well as Mr. DeRaimis here, for instance. We can say we're both farsighted, but if we exchanged glasses, we wouldn't be able to see out of each other's glasses. There are certain proclivities and things that he has that I don't have in terms of stigmatism and the like. So what he has, he has glasses that are geared towards him as an individual, and I have the same. My glasses are not to be worn by anyone else in this room. They won't apply. You may be able to see okay, but they won't be exactly what you need. That's what we're trying to do with this initiative, is create medicine that's geared towards you as an individual. The only way that this can be accomplished is if we get people to contribute and participate in the research necessary to create this type of medicine. And so thus, we come forth with the All of Us Program. The program has been in existence for a little over a year and a half nationwide. However, Quality of Life has just recently joined as of May of last year. My mission is to help get those participants, those people who are willing to contribute, and the overall objective is to obtain a million specimens or contributors to the research. The research is primarily consisting of surveys and a little medical involvement in terms of blood and urine samples, or a swab, a saliva swab. So those are the three options that you have to contribute to the survey, I mean, to the research, as well as the surveys that they have you conduct online. There's an app out, so if you have a smartphone, you can use an app, you can go to the website. And of course, I'm available as well to help anyone who may be challenged in those areas as far as entering data into a computer or to a smartphone. And so we have gotten off to a great start. We had the opportunity to present to several city leaders as well as religious leaders on last week, and I was invited here today to contribute, to continue to communicate the opportunity to participate. It's only as good as the participation. So we are asking, and asking the city council to consider letting me come out to your town hall meetings or any community engagement that you may have. I am out pursuing things on my own, but I welcome any opportunity from you all, as well as you as the citizens of Gaston, to participate and present this program. Are there any questions or anything I can entertain at this time?
Obviously, there's a healthy, there's a healthy level of concern when it comes to research programs, and, you know, over the years, there's, you know, there's been the seed of distrust planted in many communities as it relates to that kind of thing. So how do you help people to overcome that as you're walking through this?
Yes, sir. One of the things that we had to go through was a cultural sensitivity training. And of course, one of the examples, this is the national program, one of the examples used was the Tuskegee Experiment. And if you all know, that was quite some time ago, probably about 100 years ago, close to 100 years ago, where citizens were injected with a virus, basically, with the syphilis virus. However, this program is strictly you giving information at your discretion. If you choose to just do the surveys, you're making a contribution. If you just choose to do the surveys plus the blood sample, you're making a contribution. If you choose to do the entire program, you're definitely making a contribution. But any amount of data that you choose to give will go towards the greater good. So that's what we try to do, to try and ease some of the brunt. And there have been individuals who strictly did the survey, and that's great information because all of it matters.
Is there a cost?
There is no cost associated with this program. It is totally anonymous. Everything is confidential unless you share with me, and I'm sworn to confidentiality. I'm the only person that you could deal with in terms of communicating and getting your data entered. So there's no challenges there as far as your information being compromised.
And your name is not on there. It's a number. You get a number, correct?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Worthy. You have an identifier number. So if you contribute a blood sample, all samples go to the Mayo Clinic in Minnesota as well as in Arizona. Mayo Clinic is one of the most renowned medical facilities in the United States. Your information does not have your name on it. You are given an identifier number. So if there's anything that is discovered that you need to be concerned or informed about, they will contact you via that identifier number. So no names will be on the specimens whatsoever.
That's great.
All right. All right. May I leave these with someone?
Sit.
Thank you. Let me keep one just in case. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Hold on, sorry. I'd like to quickly share my contact information. If you need to speak to me personally, you can contact my office, which is 256-439-6477, or you can reach me via email at chris, C-H-R-I-S dot Williams at Q-O-L-H-S dot com. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Mayor, Council, Madam President, Chief and Engineer, City of Gaston. First, I want to get my thank yous out the way because I'm very bad at remembering names. And so I'm with Carver Community Revitalization Committee, which serves the needs, help with the community service of needs in District 3, primarily the Tuscaloosa Avenue area. So I want to give a thanks and shout out to the Parks and Recreation, Jen, who was presenting earlier, Timmy and the Carver Community and Gymnasium employees, Parks and Public Works, Mike Hilton, and our partnership with one of our announcements here is Denise Taylor, who is the Executive Director of Keep Alabama Beautiful, and then Ms. Jessica Nels with Keep Edgewall County Beautiful, Mayor Guyton, who has been so generous in working with us, and then, of course, the city council, and those city councilmen know who they are. First, I want to explain exactly who we are. Carver Community Revitalization Committee serves family by responding to community aspirations with an expanded array of products, services, partnerships, with the mission of empowering residents to revive their neighborhood and enhance the quality of life. Carver Community Revitalization Committee also helped to stabilize, preserve, and revitalize the Carver District area. This include, but not limited to, painting of homes, building wheelchair and walk assistance, walking assistance, ramps, small detail landscaping, community outreach, more importantly, community outreach, volunteering, job resources, financial education, homeownership, workshops, and so many others. Very little talk, but more work. Prime example, this Saturday, February the 22nd, 2020, 7:00 AM through 1:00 PM, we are partnered with Calhoun Plumbing, Exchange Bank, Bowtie Productions, Gaston Tourism Board, J and J Tax Services, as well as Diamond Dolls Motorcycle Club, and we will be doing a community cleanup day in the Carver community area from one end of Tuscaloosa Avenue to the other end of Tuscaloosa Avenue. Many volunteers have signed up. That sign up volunteer area is www.ccrcgaston.org, okay? And that's February the 22nd from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Breakfast will be provided, it's first come, first served, being that we don't have an accurate number of our participants. And then lunch will be provided by the organization, and we should have pretty much a good number of servings to serve those that come out, okay? Our second event, which will be that Sunday, following that Saturday, we will be having our first annual Black History Banquet. That banquet speaker would be Stephen Horton, who is a native of Gaston, who is the council person, one council person in the city of Birmingham. Our performances will be by ESH Men of Distinction with a 120-member male group, all males, choir group, that will be coming down from Birmingham as well, performing. Our local performances will be done by Raw Elite Queens, PEP. We will have display arts will be provided by Tony Reddick, which I was our Board of Education Superintendent, also Franklin Coleman, who is better known as Tucson. And then we have a young artist who is a relative of John Sandrich. Most people know him, who is niece, her name is Summer Rice, and I think she's about around 2021, maybe possibly 22. And what we're going to do unique with her while the program is going on, she's going to kind of display some art by actually painting, just freestyling while the program is carrying on, okay? Dinner will be served. Other things will be carried on as well. The tickets can be purchased on www.ccrcgaston.org. To jump ahead, and March, the first Saturday in March, we're having, that will be, don't have the actual day, I think it's maybe March 3rd or something of that nature. But the first Saturday in March, it's March 3rd, 2020, which will be the first Saturday in March, we're doing another cleanup day. And we're looking this time to, with our seniors and our veterans, it's a special day catered to them in this cleanup day. We're going to actually do some landscaping for these gentlemen and ladies that are needing some assistance or like this particular service done for them within the community. For that Black History Program, I failed to mention that our ceremony conductor would be Neonta Williams, who is also a native of Gaston, who is currently a resident of Birmingham. So any information that you would like about these programs or events that we have coming up, we can be found on our website. All events leading all the way to our annual Christmas program, or Christmas parade can also be found on our website as well. And we're also looking forward to possibly having Gaston Times there if we could, okay? Any questions, comments? Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor?
I'll piggyback a little bit on the cleanup, not Parks and Rec, but Public Works and the cleanup group, they're going to be doing sweeps. They started this past weekend, and... And I get out and ride around a lot and people will dump furniture on a median like over on Meagan or Sansom and just leave it. Or they go to an empty house and just dump stuff and leave it. And we don't have a decision yet on the amount, but I'm for when they get caught and written up, they pay a fine. I hope y'all think about that. You know, we, we got too nice of a town just to go around and throw stuff out. I mean, it just, we got plenty of places to put. If you just call, we'll take exact where to go, we'll get it. But anyway, I just wanted to comment on that.
Councilman Wiggum.
Thank you, Madam President. Do, do want to echo the mayor's sentiment as it relates to, you know, just support, being supportive of any citizens, groups, and individuals who engage in any level of litter cleanup. So thank you, Mr. Avery and, and, and everybody else. I mean, we've heard stories about Lisa Osborne in District Seven and a lot of different activities around the city. I just talked to an individual from my district just last week who's, who gets out every, 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 every week, I think. And he's an elderly gentleman that just recently moved to the area. But he gets out every week and, and he walks around with a bag and picks up trash in his community. So we want to continue to encourage people to do that and hopefully, when you do it enough, you won't have to do it. So, so again, we're, we're very supportive of that. And if there's any way we can support you, please reach out to us and let us know. In light of what Chris Williams, who, who's a representative of Quality of Life Healthcare Services, mentioned earlier, something I'd like us to think about, Mayor, this is just, just something to kick around. I'm not sure where we could get started with this, but what we see in, in the private sector relative to, to healthcare is that many group plans have gone to requiring, at least on a, on a biannual basis, biometric screenings. And it helps to force some level of preventative care. And it also helps to drive premiums down to some degree. And so what I would ask is that, you know, the city's a part of, of a group that, that right now doesn't necessarily require those biometric screenings. So, so, you know, maybe at some level, if we could have our benefits group just research the prospect of doing that. You know, what I've found is that just having those results in front of you, because most of them, when you're done, you get a very nice report that's typically easy to read. And, and I think at the end of the day, it causes people to start thinking about little things like the blood glucose levels and, and good and bad cholesterol and, and blood pressure and, and things that we just, you know, as a general rule, don't think about. We eat, we don't exercise, and then we don't think about those things and, and then we develop these health conditions and we wonder why. So again, just something to consider, you know, Mayor, if we could just have the benefits group to take a look at that, that'd be, be something great.
I just wanted to, real quick, that is actually one of the byproducts of the program that we are initiating. So that's another benefit that the program will provide for free. And otherwise, if we require visit, copays and all of that associated. So that's another byproduct of the program that we're, that we're intending or exposing to.
That's great, great. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Carver Revitalization Committee for what they're doing in the community. And I just want to make an announcement about Ram, the Remote Area Medical, that will be coming to Gaston, the first in the state of Alabama on March the 28th and 29th, at Gaston City High School and the gymnasium. It'll be a free health clinic service, not only a healthcare, but they'll do dental and vision. And you will be able to walk out with a brand new pair of glasses for free. You don't have to show an ID, insurance card, or anything like that. But the gates of Gaston City will open up at 12:00 a.m. That's 12:00 midnight. By 3:00 a.m., they'll start handing, it's first come, first served. They'll start handing out your numbers. They will give you a number. By 6 o'clock, the doors will open up to Gaston City Gym for you to go, start going in. Now, you will, you could pick medical service and you could either pick either vision or dental. You could go to one of those. You do medical and either vision or dental. Then you have to go back and get in line for the next one. If you say you do medical and dental, then you'll get in line again for vision. You can't do all three at one time. You can only do two at one time, which is medical and then either one of vision or dental. So please come out. We'll have transportation. If you cannot, if you don't have a ride, you, we'll, we'll start giving those numbers out soon and we'll give you a ride to the, to the site, okay? Thank you.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to point out one quick clarification. Earlier, we passed a resolution for, to, to put a moratorium on certain business licenses, check cashing facilities, title loan facilities. I just want to clarify, that does not condemn or make illegal existing check cashing or title places, and it does not prevent them from relocating their business, their licensed business to another location. And the reason I wanted to bring that up is because somebody pointed out over here on, on East Broad, the Payless Shoe Store there that used to be a shoe store and it shut down, and then a check cashing place or a title loan entity rebranded that building. That was an existing title loan company that moved from one place into that place. It was not a new company. So that's just one point of clarification on that. I also want to say, great job and, and kudos to the mayor's office and everybody involved in moving the sports project park, sports park project forward. Today, we authorized the architectural, or the architect's agreement on that project, which means now we're on to the next phase of designing the electrical and the layouts and the entryways and where all the fields are going to be. And this is really exciting and it's coming to fruition. So for a lot of people who are wondering about when that would get started and how long it would take, this is another big step in that process to have those architectural designs being done. And congratulations to everybody and the Kiwanis Club. That was a fantastic pancake day this weekend. It's always so great to see so many people from the community come together and support the Kiwanis Club. I did not realize that it is one of the oldest and continuously running charitable, charitable days in the, in the world, not just in Alabama or, or in the United States. I mean, they've been doing it since 1958, I think. And it was a fantastic turnout. Thanks for the Jacksonville State mascot came out, the Gaston State mascot was there, Auburn's mascot was not there, Albie was obviously busy, Auburn had a basketball game that day. Big Al was there, but I'm not going to say thank you to him. I'm pretty sure that was Bart Dawson under there anyway. So that's all I have.
I would just like to really emphasize and make clear what the mayor just said. There's going to be a cleanup sweep in all the six, seven districts where nuisance and abatement will be coming and looking at all the yards, the lots and the houses where you have your trash and everything that's dumped out front. And you'll possibly, if it's not cleaned up after giving citations, then you'll have to pay a fine. And I would just like to say, anybody in the audience that think we, I know you know we're telling the truth, but I've got some pictures up here on my tablet and you're welcome to come and see why we need to do a clean sweep in the city because it is just a tragedy that we have, all this trash and, and all these things in our city. So let's just have a cleanup day ourselves. Everything starts at home and then it spreads all out in the neighborhood. If nothing else, we'll have motion to adjourn.
I just want, if I could, Madam President, I want to add one more thing. While we were sitting here, I've signed up for the All of Us program. I downloaded the app, I filled it out, and I've done everything there is to do on there. So it takes all of about six minutes and you can be signed up in this program. So y'all give it, give it a try. You can download it directly on your phone. Thank you.
You know, Madam President, the more we talk about trash, the more people throw it out.
I know.
And they throw it out, every, you know, we said that before.
I know. And I stopped talking about it and you all started talking about it.
They throw out Burger King bags, McDonald's bag. It doesn't take a minute to just take the stuff out of your car and put it in their trash can.
Councilman Worthy, I'll share something with the community that I do often when I am picking up trash along the streets. What a lot of people don't realize is most of those receipts inside those fast food bags have your name and the last four digits of your credit card number on them. And it's not that hard to find you on Facebook if you, if you look hard enough. So if you see one of those bags of fast food, don't be surprised if that little receipt on the side's got your name on it.
Maybe that's what we all are starting.
I was about to say that.
Like Trussford does. If you go down there shoplifting, they put your photo on Facebook.
Yeah.
So maybe we all start doing that.
I've hand delivered a few fast food bags that someone accidentally dropped back to their house before, straight to their front door.
Now can I hit the gavel?
Yes, ma'am.